Good morning. Good morning, everyone. We want to get started. We have a pretty long agenda today. Members have taken their seat. We have established a quorum. Visitors will retire behind the rail. Thank you very much. To give our invocation this morning, we have a very special guest. And I'd like to recognize Stephen Wazniewski of the Philadelphia... Wait a minute, hold on. The Super Bowl champion Philadelphia Eagles. All right? And he is here today as a guest of Councilman O. Thank you, Champ.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, everybody. Please, Sam.
I'm honored to be here with you guys. It's been awesome to see since the Super Bowl just how much that win has meant to the city. And I'm proud to have been a part of that. I think, you know, what we did was special for a lot of reasons, but hopefully we can be an inspiration that a group of people from different backgrounds, different races, different socioeconomic backgrounds can come together for a common purpose and achieve something pretty awesome. And something a lot of people know about our team is that one thing that really bonded a lot of us together was our faith in Christ and that a lot of our players are followers of Jesus and spend a lot of time studying the Word of God together, praying together. And I think that gave us a special bond. And that's why I'm here today is to pray. So let's bow our heads. Father in heaven, you are holy. You are all-powerful, almighty. You sit above the circle of the earth. We, God, down here, we look like little grasshoppers and yet you love us so much, God. You love us so much that you sent your Son, Jesus, to die on the cross to pay the penalty for our sins, God. Thank you for that. God, our prayer this morning is that your will would be done here on earth, here in Philadelphia, here in this city council, as it is in heaven. God, this city, this earth, it doesn't look like it's supposed to, God. It doesn't look like heaven. We have way too much chaos, way too much violence, way too much selfishness. God, forgive us for our part in the failings of this world. Forgive us for our sins and fill us with your Spirit that we may walk more closely with you and that we may make this world down here like it is up in heaven. God, I want to pray for this session. I want to pray for the council members, all the leaders of this city, God. We want to pray that you would give them a spirit of unselfishness, Lord Jesus, that pride would be done away with, that humility would rule, Lord Jesus. We pray that all the leaders of this city would do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, but in humility would consider others more important than themselves and that we would not, all leaders would not think of their own careers, their own interests, but would be empty vessels, God, servants, Lord Jesus, as you were a servant, Lord Jesus. You made yourself nothing coming down from heaven, coming to this earth to walk around with us dirty, selfish human beings, but you did that out of humility, God. Let our leaders take your example and follow that. God, I also want to pray for unity, Lord Jesus. We are so divided as a nation, as a city, for a lot of reasons, God. And we just pray for unity of mind, unity of heart, unity of spirit through you, Lord Jesus, through your Spirit, that we would work together and put aside our differences in your name. We love you, Lord Jesus. Ask your blessing and ask these things in your powerful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Wazniewski, for those spirited words. Council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 8th, 2018, and the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 8th, 2018 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 8th, 2018 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to the gentlemen. And behalf of the minority, the chair recognizes Councilman O.
On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
Chair, thanks to the gentlemen. And before we proceed, I would ask if anyone has a device, cellphone, or any other type of device that makes any noise, could you please turn it off? Thank you very much. This time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We wish that your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, we really appreciate you being here today. At this time, for our first presentation, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan, who presented a resolution recognizing my good friend and spiritual advisor, Sister Mary Scullion, as the Grand Marshal of the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. With Sister Mary Scullion and those accompanying her, please go on to Councilwoman Atthea Todean. And joining Councilman Heenan, we have Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Greenlee, and Councilman Johnson. And I believe we also have Councilman Squilla.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. That's right. Before we begin, I would like to say a few remarks. And it is a special occasion as we honor our Grand Marshal, but it's very special this year because a miracle is a surprising and welcome event that is not explicable by nature, natural or scientific laws, and is therefore considered to be work of a divine agency. If you listen to the interviews conducted by Sister and with Sister, along with Sister, you will periodically hear her talk about miracles. She once said that it was a miracle that she was able to get people to believe in her at the onset when no one knew anything about her, her mission, or Project Home. I've never argued or I've never said no to a nun. Catholic school has taught me well. But in this case, I would say, Sister Mary, the miracle wasn't that people believed in you. The miracle is you. You are evidence of God's power and presence in our lives and his ability to work in us and through us. From running organizations that served new immigrants to preserving the arts and culture of the Irish, the incredible people standing along with me here today in the parade's Ring of Honor, the board members of the St. Patrick's Day Observance Committee, our incredible dancers, the Celtic Flames, they all represent the best of the Philadelphia Irish community. Everyone standing here is so proud to honor and recognize Sister Mary Scullion as Grand Marshal of the 2018 St. Patrick's Day Parade. Sister is a daughter of Irish immigrants, so proud that we can call her one of our own. But we are especially proud of her tireless work to answer God's call to serving Philadelphia's homeless by giving them homes, housing, opportunity for unemployment, medical care, and education. We are here to thank and honor Sister for her fearless and wicked dedication, her compassion, and her faith. And in doing so, we are thanking God for giving us the miracle that Sister Mary Scullion is and represents. Sister, on behalf of my colleagues on City Council, especially Council President Clark, on behalf of the entire Irish community, the Ring of Honor of the 2018 St. Patrick's Day Parade Board, we thank you for being here. Galav, Mila, Mahagat. May God continue to bless you. And with that, we are going to start and recognize and honoring Sister Mary Scullion, RSM, as the Grand Marshal of the 248th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. And...
Well, this resolution covers about as much as Sister Mary's history that you can fit on a resolution. One thing that definitely won't be in here is something I experienced several years with her and her very fond memories of bartending on St. Patrick's Day at the Muldoon Saloon. And we were actually, we would actually try to be bartenders. And it didn't work real well, but we had a great time. And so, whereas Sister Mary Scullion, RSM, is a Philadelphia-based, American Roman Catholic religious sister and activist, named by time as one of the 100 most influential people in the world in 2009 alongside Michelle Obama and Oprah Winfrey. Whereas Sister Mary Scullion's commitment to the service of others began with her education at Little Flower High School, Catholic High School for Girls, a Jesuit education from St. Joseph's University, it's almost a Catholic education, right? I went there. And a master's in social work from Temple University. And whereas Scullion joined the Sisters of Mercy and began working on behalf of the homeless in 1976, she has been involved in service work and advocacy for homeless and mentally ill persons since 1978. Sister Mary was a co-founder in 1985 of Women of Hope, which provides permanent residences and support services for homeless, mentally ill women. And...
Whereas in 1988, and I was here working for Lucian Blackwell in those days, Sister Mary founded the Outreach Coordination Center, the nation's first program that coordinated city, private, and public agencies to assist people living on the streets with special needs in finding housing and shelter in a more systematic way. The following year, she and her associate Joan Dawson McConan co-founded Project Home, a nationally recognized organization that provides supportive housing, employment, education, and health care to enable chronically homeless, employment, education, and health care to enable chronically homeless and low-income persons to break the cycle of homelessness and poverty under the motto, quote, "None of us are home until all of us are home," end of quote. And whereas Project Home has grown from an emergency winter shelter to 802 units of affordable and supportive housing for persons who have experienced homelessness and low-income persons at risk of homelessness in the city of Philadelphia, there are an additional 30 units under construction, 42 units in pre-development, and 170 units in the pipeline. Project Home's goal is to complete 1,000 total units of affordable housing in the near future. And...
Whereas, under Sister Mary's leadership, Project Home established the Hub of Hope, which for six winters has served as a walk-in engagement center located in the concourses of suburban station. Since 2012, the hub has had over 36,000 visits and facilitated 1,429 placements into shelter, treatment programs, and housing around the city. Now, through a partnership between SEPTA, the city of Philadelphia, and Project Home, the Hub of Hope has expanded into a permanent location and suburban station to offer year-round services. And whereas Sister Mary Scullion has been recognized locally and nationally for her dedication to the service of the less fortunate and has received numerous awards and honorary doctorates for her leadership, including the 1992 Philadelphia Award, a 2002 Eisenhower Fellowship, the 2002 Ford Foundation's prestigious Leadership for a Changing World Award, and the 2011 Medal from the University of Notre Dame, which is the highest award given to an American Catholic. And...
Whereas, excuse me, Sister Mary's dedication to Philadelphia includes serving as a trustee at St. Joseph's University and a tenure on the City of Philadelphia's Board of Ethics. And whereas Sister Mary Scullion's unwavering devotion to service is rooted in the guiding principles of the Religious Sisters of Mercy, which was founded in 1831 in Dublin, Ireland by Catherine McCauley. And whereas the theme of the 2018 Philadelphia St. Patrick's Day Parade is "St. Patrick, bless those who respond to the call of the needy." And... Whereas, joining Sister Mary Scullion as Grand Marshal, the Ring of Honor members for the 2018 St. Patrick's Day Parade included Honorable Bobby Heenan, Honorable Brian O'Neill, Sister Kathleen Cleric, RSM, Eileen Comboy Burelli, Savan Lyons, Reverend James Callahan, Sean Traynor, William Heaney, Sr., Joseph Ashdale, Wayne Miller, Monsignor Paul Kennedy, Sr., Maureen McGarretty, Tom Reagan, Cleer McManus-Fulgenetti, Mike Roman, Jack Gill, and Joseph Driscoll. And whereas the 2018 Philadelphia St. Patrick's Day Parade would not be passable with the continued support and dedication of the Mayo Association, the Ghanacal Society, the Dairy Society, the Tyrone Society, the Cavan Society, the Galway Society, the Irish Society, the Second Street Irish Society, the Friends Sons of St. Patrick, the Irish Memorial, the Brayhan Law Society, the Irish Network of Philadelphia, the Emerald Society, the Cardes Irish Brigade, the St. Patrick's Day Observers Association, and all the individual chapters of the Ancient Order Hibernians and the Lady Ancient Order Hibernians throughout the Philadelphia and Delaware Valley. Now therefore be it...
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby recognize and honor Sister Mary Scullion, RSM, as Grand Marshal of the 248th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, and it further be resolved that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Sister Mary, RSM, as evidence of our sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Congratulations.
And at this time, the chair recognizes Sister Mary Scullion for remarks.
First, I want to recognize a little bit out of order before a Grand Marshal is the President of our St. Patrick's Day Observance Committee and Parade Committee, our own Bill Ivors.
After 46 years in politics, I don't often get to this level here, but I'm proud to be up here today. I'd like to thank our President Darrell Clark and also Bobby Heenan, Councilman Heenan, and Councilman O'Neill for introducing this resolution and all of council for signing on. Nearly 33 million Americans with Irish ancestry have made tremendous contributions to the betterment of our country. For centuries, the tenuous Irish spirit paired with American self-reliance has helped Irish immigrants and their descendants realize incredible dreams. With religious devotion, strength rooted in love of family, and confidence and promise of America, Irish Americans have engaged the American experience in robust and meaningful ways. Their neighborhoods, schools, churches, and workplaces have affirmed the importance of faith, industry, and learning. It's therefore no wonder that Americans' art, business, and public life are marked by the Irish names and symbols. So, in the spirit of St. Patrick, I wish you all a blessed and happy St. Patrick's Day. And also I'd like to say to Sister Mary Scullion, thank you for your mission here in Philadelphia and around the country. It's unbelievable what you have succeeded in doing for the unfortunate people around. And I'd like to thank my Board of Directors for a great parade last Sunday. We had tremendous weather and great crowds at our new location down at Independence Hall. Thank you and happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thanks a lot, Bill, and congratulations to the Ring of Honor. I really want to thank all of City Council, especially my friend who's awesome, Council President Darrell Clark. And also to Janie Blackwell and her late husband Lucian, who were such great leaders when the plight of the homeless, we didn't have as many friends as we do today. So, thank you so much, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
You know, I just want to say that my mom and dad, especially my mom, experienced really deep poverty when she lived in Ireland, and my mom and dad came here in pursuit of the American dream. When they came, they didn't even have a high school, I mean, a grade school education. They didn't even graduate from eighth grade. My mom cleaned houses and my dad was a bartender. I really never lived up to his ability, but that's beside the point, okay? But the thing I really think is really important is they came in search of the American dream and they worked for that American dream of equal opportunity for all. And as long as we have people living in our streets and as long as we have immigrants who are unwelcome in our country, that dream is still just that, a dream. And we have a lot of work to do in our society to make that dream a reality. Vincent Harding said, "Is America possible?" And that question still haunts us today in the society that we live in today where there's greater economic disparities and they're growing. And so, you know, I'm deeply honored and touched by this award, but it's only an indication of so much more work that needs to be done. And when we as Irish, coming from an Irish culture and, you know, have, you know, made gains in this country, it's even more incumbent upon us never to forget where we came from and never to forget the struggles of others because we're one human family. Thank you.
Council will be at ease.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a resolution recognizing Chaney University. Would Milk Colston and those accompanying him please join the Councilwoman at the podium? Chair recognizes Council McGreen, Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Gim, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, Councilman Taltenberger, Councilwoman Parker, of course, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Jones, Councilman Johnson.
Good morning. This is a special pleasure for me. As you know, I'm very proud to be Janie from Chaney. I want to thank Michael Cord for all of his work for Chaney, all those who are here. Bob Bogel, thank you for everything you do and always have done. And I won't mention anyone else at this point, but thank you all for being here. And I want to thank all my colleagues. Resolution honoring and recognizing Chaney University on the fortieth anniversary of its 1978 NCAA Division II Basketball Championship.
Whereas on March 18th, 1978, the Chaney Wolves made history by defeating the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay and bringing home the NCAA Division II Championship Trophy and...
Whereas Chaney State College opened as a number-two team in the nation in the first Division II poll that year, just behind Green Bay, which held the number-one spot the entire season, and with its only loss this season being against Division One DePaul University. And...
Whereas there were thirty-two teams in the Division II Men's Basketball Tournament forty years ago. Chaney defeated Adelphi University in the regional semifinals, then went on to vanquish Philadelphia College in the regional final, which led them to beating Sacred Heart University in the national quarterfinals, and finally Florida Institute of Technology in the national semifinals. And...
Whereas the Chaney championship team, led by Naismith Hall of Fame Coach John Chaney, was comprised of John Butts, Dwayne Coleman, All-American Milk Colston, Tournament MVP Andrew Fields, Kenny Henson, Jeffrey Hutcherson, Roger Laseth, Gerald Mills, Charles Murphy, Gilbert Saunders, Arthur Stone, and John Walter. And...
Whereas winning the championship would not have been possible without the dedication of Coach John Chaney. And whereas Chaney University honored its 1977-78 Division II National Championship Men's Basketball Team on February 17th, 2018, inside Cope Hall on the campus of Chaney University. And...
Whereas, March 18th, 2018, will be the fortieth anniversary of this momentous occasion in the Chaney University history. We congratulate you and celebrate wholeheartedly with you.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors Chaney University on the fortieth anniversary of their 1978 NCAA Division II Basketball Championship.
Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Coach John Chaney and the 1978 Chaney Men's Basketball Team as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition. President Clark says there will be no challenge by the City Council basketball team because they still look like they can play.
We don't do embarrassment well, no. At this time, the Chair recognizes Milk Colston for remarks.
Wow, it's been forty years since we won a national championship. I just want to take just a second to talk about the journey. In 1978, Chaney University had two championship teams. We had a women's championship team that went to the Final Four that year, and they should be recognized as well. We also had a coach. A coach that was demanding, who had high expectations, who taught us about unity and togetherness. And I believe that these are the ingredients that help us, that propelled us to become winners. Two years prior to winning the national championship, we reached the Eastern Finals. We lost both years at the buzzer. My senior year, which would be our third year, we returned. And during that time, we won at the buzzer. This was the first time we had reached the Final Four, and we were playing the number-one school in the country that year, which was Green Bay, Wisconsin. It was a great game. We had guys who came into the game and they did their job. They did an outstanding job, and that's why we're standing here today. I want to thank the men on the 1978 championship team for not only being good athletes, but being good people. In closing, I'd like to give a special thanks to Pamela West, who was a cheerleader during our time. And I also would like to give a special thanks to Michael Cord, who's gone beyond the call of duty for Chaney University. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have two more speakers. Chair recognizes the aforementioned Michael Cord, and then we'll have Mr. Robert Vogel.
I've never met a microphone I didn't like, but everybody who knows me knows I do my angry black man thing, and I'm not angry today, so that's all I have to say. Let's give a big shout out.
Good morning. On behalf of the members of the Council of Trustees of Chaney, we applaud the team of 1978 for all that they did then, and we absolutely respect the men and women who are there today, who wouldn't be there had it not been for people like them. So, on behalf of all the members of council, we'd like to thank the City Council and all the members of council, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Council ladies.
Check, check. Check one, two, check one, two, check one, two, check, check.
Thank you. And again, congratulations. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Green, who will present a resolution honoring the Montier family. Would William Pickens III and those accompanying him please join the Councilman at the podium?
Good morning. It's a pleasure to do this resolution, and I want to thank my good friend Nicole Allen White and all the people at the Philadelphia Museum of Art for giving me some information about this phenomenal family. Just last month, you know, February is Black History Month, but we all know black history is American history. And this unique family, I think, crystallizes the unique history of our country, the fact that their lineage goes back to the first mayor of this city. And just having an opportunity to learn about their history, about their role in Philadelphia and Sheltonham was phenomenal. I thought it was very important that we highlight this unique family and their history and how it symbolizes our country. So, given great honor to present this resolution honoring the Montier family of Philadelphia and Sheltonham, recognizing their historical significance and contributions to our region. Whereas during the early colonial period, prior to the establishment of our nation, William Penn received a large land grant from King Charles II of England as a repayment of a debt owed his father. And whereas in the course of developing what would be known as Pennsylvania, Penn required prospective landowners to purchase parcels of land in the wilderness as a precondition to buying land in the city. And whereas in 1682, a group of fifteen Quakers pooled their resources to acquire land from William Penn, and the wilderness portion of their new land became Sheltonham Township, one of the nation's earliest suburbs. And whereas, one of these landowners was Humphrey Moray, who controlled 250 acres in the western portion of Sheltonham, who would be appointed by Penn as Philadelphia's first mayor in 1691.
Wow. Whereas, in spite of the vital role in the formation of the white abolitionist movement, some Quakers, including Moray, were still slaveholders. And whereas upon the death of Humphrey Moray, bequeathed in his human property to his children, and one enslaved woman known as...
Cremona.
Cremona or Mooney, went to the home of the youngest son, Richard. And whereas Richard Moray and...
Cremona.
Cremona fell in love and married and had five children, a rare example from the time and place in history of consensual relationships between men of European descent and women of African descent. Whereas after Richard died, Cremona, who was left 198 acres of land in his will, met in 1766, married Jean Montier, a black man of French Caribbean descent, and they later... in 1766, married Jean Montier, a black man of French Caribbean descent, and they later had one son. And whereas, the Mountaineers... That was you? Okay. The Mountaineers, Montiers, including the children of Richard and Cremona, built a homestead in Sheltonham, where they lived and made boots and shoes, and established a shop in Philadelphia which went on to prosper and bring them considerable wealth. And...
Whereas the descendants of Richard and Cremona have played crucial roles in the history of our nation, like serving in the Union Army during the Civil War and in the sustaining of the local black community, including establishing and supporting churches, burial grounds, and mutual aid societies. And whereas in 1841, Hiram and Elizabeth Montier commissioned a pair of sitting self-portraits in oil, an option which at the time was only available to families with wealth, very few of whom were African-American descent. And whereas those rare and unique examples of American art were handed down through several generations of Montiers and were privately held unto one descendant, William Pickens III, inspired by the historic election of the first black president of the United States, lent them to the Philadelphia Museum of Art for a public display. And whereas the history of the Montiers dating back more than three centuries, including the portraits of Hiram and Elizabeth, the home in Sheltonham, and a trove of documents, has been the subject of several articles and documentaries, including a new half-hour documentary produced by WHYY. And...
Whereas the story of the Montiers remind us that this nation would not have been built if not for the efforts of a broad and diverse group of individuals, all of whom deserve a share of the prosperity it creates. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, that this council does hereby honor the Montier family of Philadelphia and Sheltonham and recognize their historical significance and contributions to our region. Further resolved, then a gross copy of this resolution be presented to William Pickens III and other descendants of the Montiers as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much. On behalf of my family, and they're all behind me, we have some in front of me as well, we thank the city council and this wonderful city, the nation's capital. Way back when, we've been here 348 years in Philadelphia, and we greeted guys like Thomas Jefferson and James Madison, Benjamin Franklin, right here in this city. The Montiers, the Morays, were here, growing, prospering, trying to shape the Morays and Folkways of our nation. And behind me, you see the heirs of all of that work. Our tendrils extend across this land, around the world. We have one cousin who came in from Brussels. So we're everywhere, and anywhere America needs us. We thank WHYY and Karen Smiley for her wonderful work in helping orchestrate and organize this family reunion. We have been around, I say, for 348 years. We'll be around another 348 years, guaranteed. We love this country and help make it what it is today. And I think that Philadelphia is the right place for us to celebrate and commemorate. And so I bless you all, God bless our family, and God bless this nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council ladies. Thank you. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a quick moment to recognize one of my colleagues from Democratic Municipal Officials, which is a national organization representing 40,000 local officials all across this country. We just came back from the National League of Cities Conference in DC. I'd like to recognize Mayor Ian Baltutis from Burlington, North Carolina.
Oh, okay. Oh, there you go. Welcome. Welcome. Hope you're enjoying yourself. Thank you. Okay. The next order of business is communications, and the chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 14, 2018, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on March 1, 2018. And that on March 14, 2018, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on March 8, 2018, Bill Number 180098. And I am transmitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of the parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by Norwich Drive, 67th Street, Essington Avenue, and 70th Street. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by Castor Avenue, Loretto Avenue, Elgin Avenue, and Blye Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by placing on the city plan an irregularly shaped area extending along the northerly side of John F. Kennedy Boulevard from 22nd Street to 23rd Street in order to conform with the lines established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest such as an easement by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Kensington and Taconi Trail. And authorizing an agreement between the City of Philadelphia and redevelopment authority for the PRA to act as the city's condemnation agent, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, you have any additional messages?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills, one privileged resolution and two non-privileged resolutions, and I wish to be recognized after the title resolution calling Bill Number 171109 as read for motion on the resolution, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled miscellaneous by creating a new chapter 212600 entitled environmental impact statements to provide for the preparation of such statements in connection with council legislation.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 92700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sales of Alcohol: Verification of Age to authorize the sale of liquor and malt or brewed beverages until 3:00 a.m. and to shorten the chapter title.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings to examine the current missions of the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau and Visit Philadelphia as we explore the feasibility of a merger of the two organizations.
And that will be in today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt legislation to create a statewide Keystone Scholars Higher Education Savings Program.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution requesting the mayor to return to council Bill Number 171109 entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the provision of mandatory training for city officers and employees regarding sexual harassment in the workplace for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes had it. This resolution with the suspension of the rules will be placed on today's final passes calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution also naming the 3800 block of Cambridge Street Dr. Carl S. Moore Way.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, on your behalf, I offer one bill, and on behalf of Councilman Heenan, I offer one bill and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by placing on the city plan an irregularly shaped area extending along the northerly side of John F. Kennedy Boulevard from 22nd Street to 23rd Street.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest such as an easement by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Kensington and Taconi Trail.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Crispin Gardens Athletic Club Cheerleading Team for their hard work, determination, and success upon winning the 2018 National Championship in the Senior Recreation and Club Division at the UCA National High School Cheerleading Competition.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing Wednesday, March 28, 2018, as Crossing Guard Appreciation Day in Philadelphia.
Also on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 10836A of the Philadelphia Code entitled Temporary Removal of Firearms of Persons Posing a Risk or Imminent Personal Injury to Self or Others by revising requirements.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing honoring and commemorating Juneteenth in Philadelphia as the day when slaves were freed in the United States of America 153 years ago and further celebrating National Juneteenth Independence Day, which is also known as Freedom Day on Tuesday, June 19, 2018.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by Norwich Drive, 67th Street, Essington Avenue, and 70th Street.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills and one non-privileged resolution. These pieces of legislation are co-sponsored by council members Heenan, Sanchez, Gim, and Squilla.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21,000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Political Contributions and Expenditures to add and make changes to provisions regarding campaign contributions, contributions to transition and inauguration committees, and campaign finance disclosures.
And that will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled Referenda Approved by the Voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Council of the City of Philadelphia to adopt a system of public financing of campaigns for city elected offices.
And that will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution submitting to the electors of the city an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled Referenda Approved by the Voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Council of the City of Philadelphia to adopt a system of public financing of campaigns for city elected offices.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution sponsored by council members Gim, Green, Heenan, Johnson, and Greenley.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Congress to support the passage of the TIP Income Protection Act.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Good morning, Council President. I have one non-privileged resolution today, co-sponsored by council members Green, Bass, Parker, and Greenley.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the United States Senate to pass S. 1801, the Medicare for All Act of 2017, and affirming universal access to health care as a human right.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubman-Burger.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to investigate Department of Human Services policies on contracting with social services agencies that either discriminate against prospective LGBTQ foster parents or allow non-LGBTQ foster parents to discriminate.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I offer one non-privileged resolution, co-sponsored by council members Squilla, Heenan, Bass, Don, Green, Taubman-Burger, Jones, and Parker. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing March 29, 2018, as Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Philadelphia. the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's calendar. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the next order of business is reports from the committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee of Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to which is referred Bill Number 180012 entitled an ordinance amending Section 21, 105 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hero Awards by increasing the amount that may be awarded to family members of firefighters, police officers, and prosecution detectives killed in the course of performing heroic deeds and by making certain technical changes. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 180012.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180012. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. This will be placed in our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee of Transportation and Public Utilities.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities report one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read their report.
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to which is referred Bill Number 180170 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 322 by striking from the city plan and vacating Glenlock Place from McGargy Street to its terminus northeastwardly therefrom, striking from the city plan and vacating Ditman Street from a point southwest of Talbot Street to its terminus further southwestwardly therefrom, and striking from the city plan and abandoning of a certain drainage right of way which extends between the said termini of Glenlock Place and Ditman Street. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
The chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 180170.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180170. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that bill will be on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that those bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and they will be placed in our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions that are on the final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Council President. There are bills and resolutions that are being called up. If I could just get to the right page, my apology. All right, and I do want to thank you for recognizing me and the following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 170967-A, 180219, 180220, 180224, 180225, 180228, 170954-A. All other resolutions and bills are being held at this time.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering the resolutions and bills on the final passes calendar today, if you haven't already done so, I ask you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device. When a light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we would ask that you respectfully adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Mr. Decker, would you please call the first witness?
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 180228, 180225, and 180220.
Good morning. This is official decree of the people. Remind them this quote warranto, and as such requires immediate action, immediate action and remedy. Every week, council mayor and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. A few days ago, Congressman Brady and council president announced a private bill to be held, to be, to help an undocumented person. Meanwhile, real constituents are being made homeless and being removed from their neighborhoods while their elected representatives refuse their sworn duty to meet with them. A constituent is defined as a voting member of a community. Elected representatives are required to help constituents. In 2016, an outsider was elected. The sovereign people send a clear message to the elected monarchy that violating the people is not allowed, that violating oath, law, and constitutions will be prosecuted. Laws are like bibles. Unless they are followed, nothing changes. As public servants, you cannot violate oath, constitution, and law without penalty. How can agents and agencies steal my home without compensation? Due process, Seventh Amendment, trial by jury. How can government pay a contractor upwards of $100 million, mostly feeble taxpayer HUD money, to build a mall on my stolen home? Why has no official demanded the Attorney General investigate and prosecute as required by law? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26 P.A. CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-all government must have its charter government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty act any more than a fireman can refuse to play a fire. The sovereign people require the oath constitution laws be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath constitution of all.
Thank you, Free Testerman.
I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create a new law.
Thanks, Free Testerman.
Debbie Rowe, commenting on 170408 and 180220. Good morning. Hello, everyone. Okay, I'm going to speak on 180220. Resolution authorizing the Commission of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fee simple title to certain city-owned lots and pieces of ground with public buildings and improvements thereon situated in 16th Ward of Philadelphia, City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Chapter 16-400 of the Philadelphia Code in authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of such properties for rehabilitation and/or improvements in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-4 of the Philadelphia Code. I'm very familiar with this. This was a beautification-type contractual agreement that mere, mere, uh, uh, mere, can't think of his name right now, but anyway. My property, I had property like that. I was very involved in beautifying my community, and I had, did everything I was supposed to in accordance with Chapter 16-400, and my properties were not conveyed to me through the Redevelopment Authority. President Council put a stop to that, and I was fighting for my property for 10 years. And until I got lawyers involved, they were not conveyed. Eventually, they were conveyed, and still my contractual agreement was not honored. It was supposed to be given to me for nominal fee. I wound up paying outrageous settlement costs, thousands of dollars to get my properties, and, um, I'm just not in agreement with this at all because, you know, after paying thousands of dollars when it was supposed to be nominal fee, I wind up having another burden placed on me, 10 more years before I could actually sell or do anything I wanted with it without the City of Philadelphia, President Clark, getting a piece of that money, which I think is outrageous, especially as a constituent who wanted to beautify my community. Not only that, it's like high taxes now. I'm paying 1,000 percent more than what I was paying, which was $125 a year for a lot property. Now I'm paying 1,002, $1,125 a year, which wants to really put me out of my community. And, um, you know, I'm not in agreement with whatever he's in cahoots with, with Temple University as far as special interest groups, you know, gentrification. It's just horrible, and I am not in agreement with this.
Can wind it down. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rowe.
Rochelle Bilal, commenting on 160248. I'm not in agreement with. I'm not in agreement with what Temple University is for its socialization as well as what it increases our taxes even more.
Good morning, Councilman Clark. Good morning, council people here this morning. I'm, I'm finding out that this bill is being held, Bill Number 160248. As I constantly read over everything in reference to this exclusion of use in occupancy tax, I, I caution you in reference to the organizations in this city that have property in this city that don't get a break from any taxes in this city, that taxes have increased over the years in reference to their property, that now on top of abatement, you want to give an occupancy exclusion. Until you look at those that are struggling to maintain their properties in this city, you shouldn't give anybody an exclusion from occupancy tax. Those that here that's been paying taxes to say, somebody come in here and say you don't have to pay the occupancy tax that most of us are struggling to pay, along with the assessment that keeps constantly going up and your taxes going up, and now everybody else gets an exclusion. I'm asking you to relook at that bill, 160248. On the other hand, we are constantly saying, I'm a part of the no stadium, no deal coalition. No stadium, no deal coalition. We hear what you're saying, but until temples say it, we're going to keep saying, no stadium, no deal coalition. And from the coalition, all your council people has a letter. This is your letter, Councilman Clark.
Thank you.
It's officially from the state, from the no, no stadium, no deal coalition.
Thank you.
That is not just the stompers, it's a coalition of us are saying this. So until they say no, we're going to keep saying, no stadium, no deal, no stadium, no deal.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rowe.
Patrick Duff, commenting on 170967.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
I come to you, it's actually National Sunshine Week this week. Sunshine Week is the sunshine laws that create open public meetings.
Mr. Duff, are you going to talk about the public educational supplement?
Actually, that's the interesting.
That's what you signed up for.
Yeah, that's the interesting part, and that's why I'm here. Both the other speakers were cut off basically at the end, which is fine.
Uh, we will, you know.
You guys don't provide.
I need you to talk about what you signed up for.
Well, I'm glad you're doing this because it's going to give me the right to sue you for cutting me off.
I mean, you know, we're still waiting for your challenge.
Because you don't have, you don't have an open public.
Asking for you to please testify.
You have no open public comment section in your city like every other city in this state.
Mr. Duff.
And it's, it's.
Mr. Duff, can you please, no, you're supposed to talk about what you signed up for.
Let me say, I support your bill. Can I speak now?
What bill?
I support your bill.
You signed up for the public education.
Do I have the right to speak now? As a citizen, a taxpayer?
Duff, we've been going through this for a while.
You have.
Let me call the next witness.
Barry Thompson.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Barry Thompson, commenting on 170854.
Good after, good afternoon, uh, City Council. Good afternoon, City Council President. My name is Barry Thompson. I am the Vice President of the Philadelphia Tenants Union. I support Bill Number 170854. We go throughout the city, getting the support of the community. We also have the support of the Philadelphia Mayor's Task Force, Eviction Task Force, considering supporting this bill. The problem that we have now today is we're being refused to meet with certain city councilmen in certain districts about supporting this bill. We asked a long time ago to sit down with you concerning a good cause. At the time, we was called the Philadelphia Tenants Union and was called Just Cause Eviction Bill at the time. You told us that you wanted no part of this, uh, to fill up.
This the Councilman Jones?
Yes, this the same bill, Councilman Jones, this is presented. We, the Philadelphia Tenants Union, asked to sit down with you over a year and a half ago, asking concerning the Philadelphia Tenants Union and the bill that we was fighting for. At that time, it was called, it was called Just Cause Eviction. The city determined to make it to Good Cause Eviction. The whole purpose is making it to the cause that we all want to stand together on one ground. We want to ask city council member and other city council members to come together and support this bill. This bill, Good Cause Eviction, will also help with the eviction crisis in the City of Philadelphia. And we ask the city, city council to stand behind us and to help us get this bill passed.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Free Testerman.
Jarrett Smith, commenting on 170854.
Hello. My name is Jarrett Smith. I'm the Campaign Director for the Philadelphia Tenants Union. I urge city council members to consider this bill very strongly. Philadelphia has an eviction crisis. I'm an organizer by trade, and I'm an organizer in the community. And it's very easy to say Philadelphia has an eviction crisis and look at the data and look at one-fifth of the housing being gone by the numbers, but to go down and having organized in buildings like the Pennwin, speaking with teachers, with elderly people, with generations of families, and telling them that there is nothing the city can do for them, they're going to be homeless in several months. It's a lot easier to deny a meeting with your constituents. It's a lot easier to pass resolutions to support more development in the city. But let me tell you, it's very, very hard to look people in the face and tell them that there is nothing that we can do. What the Philadelphia Tenants Union has done is organize tenants throughout the city and constituent organizations to fight for a bill that will put a preventative measure for homelessness in this city. So far, we've collected the support of Community Legal Services, the Tenant Union Representative Network, Stadium Stompers, Philadelphia S.A., Witnesses to Hunger, Fair Housing Rights Center, Philly DSA, Liberty Resources, Help MLP, Unite Here, Fifth Square, Temple University Graduate Student Union, and Mount Olive Tabernacle Baptist Church. We've covered all types of people in the city, and everyone working in housing in the city agrees that good cause is a measure that we should be taking. Note, it is not rent control, and as a former real estate agent in New York City, having sold some very expensive real estate, I can tell you, this will not adversely affect development in the city. It will just turn the tables and put more of a balance and power for your constituents, for tenants in this city when they go before a court of law. Thank you.
Thanks, Free Testerman. Sit. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to be excused, but I would also like to be voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall reflect your vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker?
Jackie Williams, commenting on 160248.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yes, I like to give honor to God, and I want to say good morning to everyone, or good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Williams. I live sixteen oh nine North Eighteenth Street. Um, I was born and raised on that block. My mother had a beauty shop there. My mother invested in other businesses in the area. I'm a block captain, I'm running for committee person. DDL, some type of, um, funding, supposed to have purchased my house. They threatened me, they've taken my bedroom set, living room set, freezer, out of my house, my furs, other things. Um, they're trying to force me to leave. They came back again and asked me to leave. Uh, I want to thank, um, Councilman Clark for trying to help me. I'm not leaving out of my property, because I worked to pay two and three months mortgage. I was working seventy hours a week to pay my house off. I didn't have it. I was paying my taxes on the budget. Now, I haven't paid it in a few months because of this DDLC, and I'm not gonna let them run me out. They're trying to give me extenuating, uh, water bills, um, tell me I have to leave to give them the property. Sent a decorator out the other day, on Monday. I am a decorator. My house was nice. NAS boxes was packed up. I'm still not moving out of my house, because at my birthday at twelve, five, forty-six, should I have to try to buy another property or get mortgage to let somebody, these corporations come in and take over for Temple? I belong to Temple Stompers. It's down with Temple, up with the community. I try to keep clean, I keep, sweep the streets both sides, me, school, we're trying to get money together so that the children will get new books and stuff. Why should I have to go to this for some, through this for some DDL? I've never even heard of it before. How can they just come in and take over our properties? I need some type of help so that I can organize my home, put things back in their proper perspective place, and buy new things over, so I can enjoy my home without having to be scared somebody's gonna knock on my door.
Thank you. Before you leave, before you leave, we'll follow up on you.
Okay, thank you.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Ms. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. It is time to move to our calendar. Mr. Decker, could you please read the title of one seven oh nine six seven A?
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Educational Supplement of the Philadelphia Homero Charter relating to the selection of the members of the Board of Education and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution number one seven oh nine six seven A be withdrawn.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one seven oh nine six seven A is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, one eight oh two one nine.
A resolution calling for the prompt discharge of the hashtag Me Too Act from the Pennsylvania House Committee on Labor and Industry with an affirmative and favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilwoman Parker and I, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh two one nine is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh two two zero.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the Sixteenth Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. One eight oh two two zero is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh two two four.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank D's conveying title to certain properties located in the Seventh Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh two two four is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh two two five.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-five twenty Potter Street located in the Seventh Councilmanic District.
Chair, chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh two two five is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh two two eight.
A resolution also naming the thirteen hundred block of South Broad Street as Jimmy Tayun Way.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution one eight oh two two eight is adopted. Mr. Decker, um, read the title of one seven oh nine five four A.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Educational Supplement of the Philadelphia Homero Charter relating to the selection of the members of the Board of Education as approved by a resolution of the city council fixing the date of a special election for such purpose, prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and make arrangements for the special election.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill number one seven zero nine five four A be withdrawn.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Number, Bill number one seven oh nine five four dash A has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title? Bill number one seven one one oh nine, resolution, I'm sorry.
A resolution requesting the mayor to return to council Bill number one seven one one oh nine entitled, an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council, uh, proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Homero Charter relating to the provision of mandatory training for city officers and employees regarding sexual harassment in the workplace for the purpose of reconsideration of the vote by which said bill passed council, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. The resolution be adopted, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion regarding special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit consideration of special business at this time.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion passes. Mr. Decker, please read the letter from the mayor.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia. I'm returning here with, as requested by your resolution adopted today, Bill number one seven one one zero nine entitled, an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Homero Charter relating to the provision of mandatory training for city officers and employees regarding sexual harassment in the workplace, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and make arrangements for the special election for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion that council reconsider the vote by which Bill number one seven one one oh nine was passed.
Submove, Mr. President.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Majority of all members having voted in in favor that the motion carries and the vote by which Bill number one seven one one oh nine was passed has been reconsidered. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to Bill number one seven one one zero nine. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. That the amendment to Bill number one seven one one oh nine be adopted. All in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Bill number one seven one one oh nine has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar at our next session of council. We will now return to the consideration of the calendar. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining the current missions of the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau and Visit Philadelphia as we explore the feasibility of a merger of the two organizations, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Crispin Gardens Athletic Club Cheerleading Team for their hard work, determination, and success upon winning the two thousand eighteen national championship in the Senior Recreation and Club Division of the UCA National High School Cheerleading Competition, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing Wednesday, March twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen as Crossing Guard Appreciation Day in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing honoring and commemorating Juneteenth in Philadelphia as the day when slaves were freed in the United States of America one hundred and fifty-three years ago, and further celebrating National Juneteenth Independence Day, which is also known as Freedom Day on Tuesday, June nineteen, two thousand eighteen, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to investigate the Department of Human Services policies on contracting with social services agencies that either discriminate against prospective LGBTQ foster parents or allow non-LGBTQ foster parents to discriminate, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing March twenty ninth, two thousand eighteen as Vietnam Veterans Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to alert everyone that, uh, on March, Saturday, March thirty first, at the Pennsylvania National Guard Armory, twenty-seven hundred Southampton Road, uh, there will be a, uh, beef in beer, uh, to raise money for the Iraq and Afghanistan Memorial. Um, it's thirty-five dollars a ticket from seven to eleven P.M. There'll be raffles, baskets, music, and other things. The proceeds will construct the memorial to honor the two hundred eighty-eight men and women from Pennsylvania who were killed in the global war on terror, uh, in Iraq and Afghanistan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Speech is on the part of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Growing up, uh, in West Philadelphia, we had a tradition of bussing someone's chops, and it was abbreviated down to bussing. It's probably the same throughout other parts of the city. You had to be able to take it, and you had to be able to give it. Couldn't take it too personal, because you would protest too much, and people would think it must be true. But I, I feel compelled today to, um, recognize the fact that, the other day, the Health and Human Services Committee held a hearing on opioids. There was a subsequent article written where some unflattering things were said by, uh, one of the reporters. And in one case, he said that some of our questions were not well thought out and somewhat juvenile and things like that. And in my case, said that I was more concerned about the Hamburglar at McDonald's than people who had addiction. And I, I thought it was kind of funny, uh, but in the tradition of bussing, I wanted to say that I attended a funeral of a young man, Nasser Fatah, son of Sister Falakha Fatah, who died of opioids, and that wasn't in that article. That experience of seeing or hearing that someone had been in their room for two days until someone found them wasn't quite really funny. Um, I go on to say that we as council people aren't experts on everything, so we ask some questions, but really, if you think about it, it's for four audiences. Um, it's one, uh, for the people who are on TV, who don't know all of the acronyms and shortcut answers to things. So you almost have to ask the question so that people who don't have advanced degrees in, um, recovery can follow and get along, because they are the taxpayers and pay the bills. And then you have to go to the audience of the particular departments that you have to deal with and try to coax them to the place that actually gives you a real answer. Because unlike elected officials who on some occasions are politicians, they can be crafty pretty much to it. If you don't box them in to ask the exact question that you want answered, they will skirt around the issue. I want to further say that, um, the press is an important part of that, too, because they highlight those things that might be important to all stakeholders, including elected officials, including the public, and we appreciate their observation. But what we need to understand is that we're doing this thing in a methodical way to build a record on the record, so that when we come back in the budget process, we can refer to former questions and answers. I made reference in particular to the fact that there were two McDonald's, and I, I personally know these individuals for the last twenty years. Ken Youngblood, who has a, uh, store on O'Gon's Avenue and one on Frankfurt, after twenty years, is closing his Frankfurt Avenue store, because he cannot manage some of the clients that come from some of the, uh, recovery places, because his staff, who has to really coax at a fifteen dollar or less an hour to come and deal with that, get sodas thrown in their face. They get spit on. They get cursed out and threatened, don't come out the store after your shift, kind of thing. And I don't know where everybody else lives, but I go to the McDonald's at Fifty Second and Jefferson, where on Sunday, when ladies with the big hats are coming from church, are afraid to go in there, because the, the climate is such that they are uncomfortable. Now, don't get it twisted. When they tried to close Parkside Recovery, that, that community tried to close, I stood up for them, and I will continue to stand up for them, because recovery is an important part of our city. There are people who need that help. But I also have to balance, and I'm gonna use the word balance, as an elected official, that small businesses that create jobs, pay taxes, are important, too. So now, they need to Google the fact that the Hamburglar hasn't been the representative for McDonald's for quite so many years. But, that being said, I want you to know that all sides matter. The perspective of the popular soup of the day, with, you know, whatever that cause is, but people who are impacted with unintended consequences need to be heard, too. And as an elected official, not a politician, because I'm only a politician when I'm running, I'm going to serve each of those constituents, whether they ever vote for me or not, because that's what I swore to do. And I applaud my colleagues who ran that, um, hearing and who asked the tough questions, even if some of the advanced students in the grad student section already knew what was going on, the public didn't. And they deserve to hear answers, too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, speaking of unintended consequences, um, I want to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues, um, who are members of, uh, City Council's Committee on Labor and Service for attending yesterday's, uh, hearing regarding the impact of medical marijuana on employment in Philadelphia. Um, that would be Vice Chairman, uh, Councilman O'Neill, Members Heenan, Kenone Sanchez, Tobin Berger, Dom, uh, and Jim. Uh, Mr. President, while we, uh, heard some insightful testimony from the business community, the legal community, the medical community, the labor community, and our District Attorney's Office, along with, uh, other, uh, city officials, um, it is clear that there is a host of potential unintended consequences that, uh, this legislation could have on, uh, not only employers in the city of Philadelphia, but, uh, employees. Um, just for the record, Mr. Speaker, uh, Mr. Speaker, I'm getting rid of it, and that's only because you told me we're going, Mr. President. Um, just the thought, and this is just from information and data that we gathered, uh, yesterday, that someone might not be eligible to be... and data that we gathered yesterday, that someone might not be eligible to be a caregiver. We had no idea this was an issue. For their loved one because of a previous conviction is troubling. The notion that a medical marijuana patient could be fired from their job for failing a drug test is equally disturbing. In addition to that, and this comes to mind because of a recent visit to CHOP's Policy Center, its policy lab, that the notion that someone's suffering from PTSD, now I know when we think of post-traumatic stress disorder, many of us just think military, but now, because gun violence and violence overall is also beginning to be treated as a public health crisis, we are learning that our children and families and people who have been victims of sexual assault also suffer from what is diagnosed as PTSD. So that someone suffering from PTSD or cancer, or one of the other conditions, the chronic conditions that were listed, could lose their job because they are a medical marijuana patient, that was devastating. In addition to that, we learned that, let's just think about a 50-year-old who is a successful businessperson, who has led an exemplary life for decades, that they automatically become disqualified from working in the medical marijuana industry because he or she attended a concert 30 years earlier and smoked a joint, is short-sighted. In addition to that, Mr. President, I want to note for the record that I'm glad that our hearing highlighted some of those concerns and brought them to public light. I also want to note for the record that one of the things we talked about doing, and we've already began to put things in motion, was to get the private sector to work with us so that we can begin to develop a public education campaign for both employees and employers, so they not only know their rights, but they know the risk, Mr. President, because the information is, knowing the information and having it is half the battle, and we're going to work to make this happen. But it is also our hope, and we were very encouraged by the olive branches we received from the private sector, in noting that they understood our interests and seeing them, not government, but the private sector help to drive the process and lead, and hopefully come up with a set of guidelines for employees who are in the private sector. Now, relative to our own 27,000 municipal employees. We will be working, Mr. President, with our executive office, along with our council team, our council staffs, and our unions representing municipal workers, and we will be working on coming up with a rubric and a legislative prescription, if necessary and applicable, to ensure that the City of Philadelphia is a model employer, and that we do everything we can to protect municipal employees who would also happen to be medical marijuana patients. Finally, I want to just note for the record that Councilman O'Neill, I agree wholeheartedly with your sentiments, and just want to note for the record that we will submit via a formal letter and documentation to the governor, along with the legislative leadership in Harrisburg as the state is crafting its regulations on this still-evolving subject, and we will count on all of members of council to help us as we move forward in that effort, as I am often reminded of our action taken when we were working on, from a land use perspective, on the implementation of medical marijuana here in the City of Philadelphia, and we want to make sure that we just get these details right, so even whatever action we move forward with districts and people across the city don't get negatively impacted by any unintended consequences. Thank you for your patience, Mr. President, and I also want to say, and many of you may know this lady, on another issue, I want to send a special prayer to my good friend and former member of the Pennsylvania General Assembly, and that is Mike Gerber, who is an attorney and businessperson here in the city. But while we were here, I received a text message saying that Penny Gerber passed away. Now, while the Gerber family was very active in Montgomery County, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, when you think about trailblazers like our Augusta Clark and Marion Tasco, women like Colleen Alexander and Penny Gerber were laying the foundation in the suburbs so that women could have a seat at the table, Councilwoman Blackwell, relative to politics. And so, a friend of mine just sent me this message saying that Penny Gerber was a special lady. She was tough and graceful, forceful and warm, and she never backed down. She was one of the first women to go through Chase's Banking Program in the 1960s, when there were no women on Wall Street. She was the CEO of a Teamsters Unionized Transportation Company, and in her final years was totally engaged in politics. And, Mr. President, if you know Montgomery County politics, sometimes she, as the vice chair, appeared to wield more influence than even the male chairman, so special prayers sent to Mike Gerber and all of his family, and we will continue to remember the legacy of Miss Penny Gerber. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce legislation designed to yield additional revenue for the school district of the Philadelphia, given its anticipated projected $900 million deficit. I might add a footnote that this is actually an amended version of a bill I introduced in 2012 with the partnership of Representative Vanessa Lowry-Brown, and for a host of reasons that the timing was not right. As legislators responsible for ensuring taxpayer dollars and city resources are spent wisely, I am of the belief that we need to exhaust all available alternatives before asking taxpayers to give up more of their hard-earned dollars. This time, I believe the time is ripe, R-I-P-E, to reconsider extended hours for restaurants and bars as a vehicle for additional revenue for our city. And I would be remiss not to say thank you to State Representative Jordan Harris, as we've been working in a collaborative way over the past many weeks, because Harrisburg would have to allow the City of Philadelphia to explore this opportunity. Let me, let the record reflect that Representative Harris has been a real leader on this issue in Harrisburg, as he actually introduced a similar version in 2016. Let this legislation be the conversation starter on creative, non-traditional, some might argue unorthodox ways, that we should pursue to raise additional needed revenues for our school. I know that this program will require close coordination and open communication with neighborhood groups, district council members who will have a lot of say as we go forward, the business community, the hospitality community, and the Philadelphia Police Department. I look forward to what I will know will be a robust conversation, but also ultimately a friendly debate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of things I wanted to mention, and the first, I wanted to echo and really lift up my colleagues who were at the hearing on Monday around substance abuse and opioid addiction, and in attendance were Councilwoman Greenlee Heenan, Tobinberger, Jones, Gimm, Squilla, and Sanchez, and of course, it was Councilwoman Sanchez's resolution which brought us here to have this very important conversation. But, you know, this was something that to suggest that the members of council were less than interested or somehow, you know, had not done their homework, or were unfamiliar with this very important issue, is just flat-out wrong. The idea behind council and hearings in particular is to bring items to the forefront and to have transparency around issues when we ask questions. And so, we were never able to get off of the first panel, because there were so many questions for the administration in terms of how tax dollars are spent, what are we doing as a city to combat this issue? And so, we can't move beyond having that conversation with the administration until it's properly flushed out, and so, I just really wanted to, number one, thank all of my colleagues, and really, all members of council for being supportive of us as we try to deal with a very, very, very difficult issue. The second thing I wanted to mention is that today I introduced a resolution around continuing conversation around the Department of Human Services' relationship with community umbrella agencies, also known as COAs, which are contractually obligated to provide services to Philadelphia's most vulnerable children and families in their care. On February 7th, the Committee of Public Health and Human Services held an extensive hearing around the COA scorecard, and while that conversation is ongoing, this is a part of that issue that also needs to be flushed out when you think about the possibility of discrimination against the LGBTQ community. The possibility that we as taxpayers could be funding agencies with an anti-LGBTQ policy is absolutely unacceptable. We, as a city, have extensively talked about ways to be more inclusive, affirm and support all people of every background. We've investigated, and we've legislated. The city has in place laws that prohibit discrimination, so how could this be happening? The city's Fair Practices Ordinance is clear, but is possibly being violated, and so, we really look forward to getting that information out and on the record as the first and several steps that we need to do to fix that particular issue, and looking forward to having that conversation. And last but not least, I just wanted to invite everyone over to the Wawa Welcome America Council briefing immediately after session. I'm very excited to welcome the leadership of Wawa Welcome America to City Council, and as the Chair of the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, I can say that they brought an unprecedented level of energy, vibrancy, and vision to one of the nation's biggest free events. In addition to showcasing civic pride, the staff will continue to embrace diversity and inclusiveness as a key focus of the festival's programming and outreach. So we certainly hope folks can come over after session and hear the briefing, and also enjoy the free lunch. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Bass and to the committee on Monday. Having eight panels, they broke at panel one, so that we can have our education hearing. We'd still be waiting, had they not been kind enough to do so. So, that was such an important issue, and it was so kind of them to do it, and they didn't have to, when you're running a hearing, certainly you are in charge, so I wanted to say thank you. Thank you to her, and thank you to the committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President, just two quick items. Sunday morning, I actually flew to Austin, Texas, to go to South by Southwest and support our Philadelphia tech community, came back Monday night, and Philadelphia, for the first time, had its own Amplify Philly House there, with over 50 to 100 tech people from Philadelphia, and we had people coming to this house from almost every major city across the United States, whether it was Seattle, Washington, it was unbelievable how interesting and important it is for Philadelphia, and they were like, really into the sessions, we had 11 different sessions, including a tech session on diversity, and Todd Carmichael from La Colombe was there speaking about his company, but it was phenomenal for the city to see that happen, and we had this great spot in Austin. Fortunately, none of us got hurt from those terrible things that happened there, but it was a great event for Philadelphia, and people were coming in there from Washington saying, "Hey, this is better than the DC House." So it was really good for our city. And the second thing, which I have to talk about today, because we're four weeks away from the deadline of April 17th, is the Earn Income Tax Credit. And we're still not getting the right money into our city, it's still $100 million, there's still 40,000 people not getting the money, and the more we talk about it, hopefully the more people will get it. Just to go over specifics, a single parent with two children who makes $45,000 or less, a couple makes $50,000 with two children can get a check from the federal government up to $5,616 and file back three additional years, so you can get almost, well, close to four years, which is almost $22,000 or $23,000, it's a lot of money. And if you have more children under the age of 18, the checks are even bigger. Last year, I donated space at the North American Building at Broad and Sansom, and it was open for four months, we actually, the finals, we collected over, we gave out $4.5 million of refunds to 4,100 people. This year, for those people listening, we have a location at 15th and Walnut. I've donated the old LA Fitness Ballet space, the Drexel Building, it's 24,000 feet, Campaign for Working Families, United Way, the Department of Revenue, all involved, and so, if people are looking for these refunds, they'll fill out the tax returns for free. It's at 15th and Walnut, there's about 18 or 19 other sites that Campaign for Working Families maintains, and we need to get the money back to the people of this city. This money comes out of our federal withholding tax, and when that $100 million doesn't come back into our city, it's not fair to those 40,000 people. It's almost like a transfer of wealth out of Philadelphia by it not coming back. So thank you, and want to make sure as many people apply as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your persistence on a very important issue. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Yes, very quick, Mr. President, I know everybody noticed, but Bill Foster is not here today. I ask permission, if I could say this, he is undergoing heart surgery as we speak, and if you've never seen any of his photos, he has a Facebook, Bill Foster on Facebook, and he captures those moments, both in council and throughout the city, that memorialize what we as a city, as a family, are going through. And I just thought if people who are listening, or people in this chamber, could go on his Facebook and wish him well, so that when he wakes up to that, it's encouragement for him to get his butt back to work and stop loafing, all right? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes the speeches today, and with that, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 22nd, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, it's been moved in probably second, the council stand adjourned, so Thursday, March 22nd, 2018, 10:00 a.m., all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, thank you all very much.